The meeting is called to order at 7:58. Let's go on to the adoption of the agenda. All right then, I move that the agenda be adopted as presented. Seconded, all those in favor? Carry then, thank you. Disclosures of peculiar interests? None, that's fine. Let's go on to item 4.1. Presentation by Linda Meyer-Zeppo and Orla Poiret regarding the Leadership of Team Building Program. So, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the committee. My name is Linda Meyer. I'm chairperson and president of the leadership at Team Building Program. And I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to present to you this program of mine. And I really appreciate my colleagues' sustained support, continued support. And I'll introduce you now to fellow of mine. Good evening, members of council, and thank you for having taken the time to listen to me tonight. So, I'm here tonight to talk to you about Linda's program. The Leadership Team Building Program. And it's my great pleasure and honor to get involved in this program and to be recognized as a volunteer parent that has worked with regard to the implementation of this program geared towards youth endeavors. This program is taught by professionals and individuals that have a great deal of knowledge in this matter. Linda spends a lot of time to handpick those individuals that will be called upon to teach the principles inherent to this program. Oh, we have some latecomers here. Thank you. Thank you for being patient. Thank you for your indulgence. All right. For example, the first aid courses that are taught by the ambulance attendants of Prescott and Russell and the courses that are given by our first responders to the youth here in Clarence Rockland has as its main goal to save lives. And what's happening with this particular program is this, is that the older individuals, when the first responders attend, well, the adolescents now, the teenagers, teach the younger people what to do and when to do what needs to be done. And so, we teach, we give these youngsters the tools that they need to put into practice in emergency situations and also to learn to respect nature and First Nations tribes' past history. And Abenaki, the First Nations people, taught us the connection between humans, animals, and the earth by having us live in teepees and fishing. When the children heard what we call the ritual of the howling wolf at night allows them and us, when we participated in this workshop, to appreciate life as it stands. So, this is sort of like a thank you that animals and people have towards the Creator. And even then, to catch fish at certain times of the day, it's quite a challenge. I accompanied a teenager that was afraid of fishing, but I endeavored her to try this. And after she caught her trout and had, and when she cooked that trout over an open fire, had regained her confidence or her fear of not catching a fish while others would have. And she did catch a fish. And she said, when she had occasion to cook it, she said, "That's the best fish I ever had in my life, I've ever eaten in my life." Survival, we were also taught survival skills. Walk up a nice wall. Teenagers learn to make use of what surrounds them in case of emergencies to be able to They learn to bicycle responsibly along with very competent teachers. Safety being a priority. There are more and more individuals now that are traveling by bicycle and to have them taught the basic principles of making proper use of a bicycle and how to properly ride a bicycle, especially through paths in that was forest, is quite important because it's a challenging course. Mrs. Kathleen Mamadah is an internationally recognized, as well as preventionally and internationally recognized archery coach. This six-week workshop enabled youngsters the philosophy behind archery and allowed them to control their breathing and the psychological aspects behind archery to reach a particular goal. Also, public speaking taught by Rick Chandler. Taught us through a few sessions, how to talk to the public. It's not all that stressful and how to come across and how to sell your points to a public, the points that you wish to make to the public that you're addressing. We also had a triathlon athlete that talked to the youngsters about perseverance and how to focus on a precise goal. On that particular evening, youngsters had eyes wide open and ears wide open to what she was saying. Everything she stated was assimilated by youngsters. She talked about perseverance, courage, endurance. That evening was a very interesting and informative evening. Also, a course was offered with regard to obtaining a certificate for skin diving to control fear and stress when being underwater. When you're 60 feet under the water, to learn how to control stress, manner of breathing, emotions. Youngsters learned a lot through this skin diving course that was offered. There's also a program called the Duke of Edinburgh Program that was incorporated within the leadership program through Linda's effort. This program is internationally recognized that allows teenagers to go through different stages of volunteerism and accomplishments in sports, music, manual labor, woodworking. And once you've received your Duke of Edinburgh diploma, this is something that teenagers are very proud of receiving and very proud of having accomplished as courses go. Also, another activity had youngsters spend from 20 to 30 days on a sailing barge. And that recaps basically all of the elements of the leadership program. When you're on a sailboat, you need leadership skills, communication skills, team building skills. Everything has to be coordinated. People have to learn to work together. When you are called upon to man the crew of a sailboat, you learn all of these particular human assets. These youngsters learn how to communicate and work together so that the sailboat will bring them to their allocated or chosen destination. Another course taught was protocol and etiquette, taught by Mrs. Nancy Classy, who's from Montreal, teaching protocol, teaching youngsters how to shake hands properly, how to talk to people, looking into their eyes, making eye contact while doing so, how to go about being polite, saying thank you. These days, a lot of people have forgotten these basic rules of etiquette. Nancy also teaches protocol and etiquette with regard to how to properly behave at the dinner table, what to do with your cellphone, when to use it and when not to use it. And it makes a teenager more respectful and respectful towards individuals and society as a whole. Can you give those courses to adults also? Certainly, we can. How about to some mayors behind closed doors? Okay, fine. So, these youngsters learn a lot from a respect point of view. All of these experiences will remain with them and will make of them better individuals. When they came back from the Quincy Glacier Weekend, my son said, "Dad, I was afraid when I was on the iceberg or the glacier and I decided to go to the very end of the circuit. I didn't want fear to control me. I wanted to control my fear." I could have taught him, Dad, I would have liked to have taught him that. But given this program, it makes our task easier. The communication that I've had with my son since he's been following similar programs is unbelievable. My son is now more confident. He knows that I'll respect his views and he has turned out to be a much better individual. So, boys and girls coming out of this program will be respectful of others and have a sense of integrity and self-worth. These teenagers are adults of tomorrow and they'll learn to assume and the responsibility in taking decisions to impact our community. And you can help in ensuring that this program continues so that Linda can come up with resource persons to transmit the unalienable knowledge that is needed for youngsters to thrive in our society. For these reasons, we need funds to help this program continue. So, thank you for your attention. How many children have gone through this program on a yearly basis? Well, some youngsters have been adhering to this program for the past five years. Well, at present, we have 20 youngsters, Mr. Mayor, and we have six teenagers out of these 15 youngsters. And we're really trying to convert those teenagers into facilitators or mentors, if you wish, through activities and through the scaling wall exercises. And we've taught those teenagers how to speak to youngsters, how to reassure them, and how to put on the proper equipment when these youngsters are, you know, involved in different types of activities. We're concentrating on teenagers this year that will practice with youngsters. The best thing to do is to send us a letter seeking help because we'll be entering into budgetary talks very soon and we'll take a look in the, in what is available budget-wise. I invite you to take a look at the Courant des Bois program. They've implemented fundraising programs that have been quite successful. They've raised a great deal of money. The Optimists Club also strive to help children in our community then. Maybe money stemming from your golf tournament, Mr. Mayor? Yes, of course. Well, the golf tournament is set up to help our children. It's not because I like playing golf. Trust me, if you see me play, you'll know why. But that would certainly be the last sport I'd be promoting. There's also the Recreation Committee. Mr. Zant, question. Are these programs offered to francophone children? Do you, well, we also have anglophones taking part in this, in these programs. We have folks from Castleman, Plantage Genet, Alfred Bourget, Castleman, Rockland. So, really, we're talking about Prescott and Russell? Yes. You might also forward a letter to the United States of Prescott-Russell or in Castleman. You can knock at Mayor LaFleur's door there because he's, he's got money to burn, apparently. Okay, well, thank you very much then. Item 4.2, presentation of the Transportation Master Plan. Mr. Campo, I believe that's your department. Yes, indeed, it is our department, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, tonight we'd like to deal with the final product stemming from our Transportation Master Plan with an active transportation plan component, bicycle paths, multi-use paths. This is a project, it's a capital project that stems from the capital expenditures budget last year and that continued on into 2019. We completed this at the beginning of 2019. Tonight, we're here to give you a final presentation. If you have any comments, we're here to answer any questions. I'll be introducing you now to Brendan Orr from StanTech, who was the mastermind behind this study. We commissioned two public meetings, both in February 2019 and in October 2018. If you recall, Mr. Mayor, we proceeded to a non-line survey. It was, it was a great success, as things turned out. We compiled, I believe, in between seven or 800 to 800 individuals. They filled out the survey, they told us what they wanted with regards to road transportation and different paths, pathways. We met with builders, developers who attended the presentation. And following this, we compiled the comments and ideas stemming from everyone and we came up with our final product. And we will talk to you about this final product tonight. Once the presentation is over and done with, there'll be a 30-day notice given to the public at large to ask people to either consult or comment the document before it is tabled at the Ministry of the Environment. Now, the document per se will facilitate many projects that are alluded to in the document to either eliminate steps in future projects or accelerate steps for major projects that are in the works, road projects, pedestrian walkways, or bicycle walkways. That was the mandate of our study. The presentation is in English. Brendan understands in French, so feel free to ask any questions in French if you wish to do so. Good evening then.
What's going on, IT? Did you break another screen?
Yes, all right. Well, if we have any questions. Yes, I believe we've seen previous maps. Yes, we proceeded with environmental assessments with regard to road projects. There are some major projects, bypass projects outside of Rockland, and some steps will be eliminated. But you'll notice this, you'll notice what I'm referring to. Of course we will. Yes, of course we will. We can always see the replay on TV if we miss any points, any salient points to your presentation. That's fine. All right then. Michelle? Do you want me to call you Luke? No. That's fine, Mr. Mayor, don't need to call me Luke. That's fine. All right. We're in the process of starting up the presentation. I mean, he's a new guy, you've got to give him a little bit of help, right? Please bear with us, folks, as we are gearing up for the Transportation Master Plan presentation. Great. We're a little bit late on the drop, but better late than never. So.
I introduce myself again. I'm Brian Warner. I'm here with StanTech. I'm just showing a little shot of the previous presentation. I actually have a better, younger and brighter, cool work. So, I just want to say it's a privilege for myself and my team to work on this, on such an impactful document for the city of Clarence Rockland. I'm excited to present it to you. So, it looks like a lot of stuff. I'll speed through it and hopefully keep you all engaged. Essentially, I'm just going to talk about, you know, what the process is with this study as well as kind of the key findings and summary. And then, at the end of the day, how much it's going to cost, which is, I'm sure, a big, a big component of it. So, this study conforms with the municipal class environmental assessment, which is set by the province. And so, essentially, what this process does is, at a high level, looks at what your needs and constraints and opportunities are at a municipal-wide level in terms of transportation. So, as Richard mentioned before, what this allows you to do is identify key improvements that need to be implemented over the long term. And it also eliminates some steps that you need to do in terms of actually getting them out to tender and actually getting them built. So, for instance, minor improvements, like an intersection improvement or bicycle lanes, this study is enough to satisfy the Ministry of Environment's requirements to actually implement those. So, when this study is accepted by council and accepted by the Ministry of Environment, you can go and build them as soon as you get the money to build it. So, throughout this study, as Richard mentioned, we had quite a few engagement opportunities. So, the online engagement survey, so this was a survey we put out there that let the public less know kind of key areas of concern around town as well as, you know, areas that they thought were successful. So, like, for instance, Carron Street was an area that we heard from residents was something successful in the town, that they liked the new multi-use path and the improvements that had been placed there. And then, certain other areas such as County Road 17, which is no surprise to all of you, I'm sure, was an area that everybody identified as a key constraint on the network. Overall, we had almost 900 responses for the online survey. And then, we had some key stakeholder meetings with developers and departments at the city as well as two public information centers, public open houses. So, the main objective with this study is nowadays, transportation, the lines between being a driver, being a cyclist, being a pedestrian, a transit user are becoming more blurred. So, now, you might be someone who drives a portion of your trip to a park and ride and then gets on the CRT to go to Ottawa. So, what we're seeing is that our networks are a lot more multimodal. So, what we were trying to do with this study is to have all the different modes of transportation be integrated into one comprehensive document that considers it in a holistic manner. And throughout the development of this study, we looked at what council's strategy was, what the strategic pillars were in terms of sense of community, health and wellness, financial stability, and environmental responsibility. And through that review and through consultation with the community and development of this plan, we came up with six main objectives of this Transportation Master Plan. And they were provide infrastructure for growth, ensuring that, you know, all this new growth that you're going to have in South Rockland, other areas of Clarence Rockland can be accommodated, prioritize and encourage active transportation. So, that means, you know, providing that as an option so that not every trip in the city has to be contingent on owning a car. Prioritize and encourage transit. So, as I alluded to before, County Road 17 was identified as a constraint. And maybe there's some opportunity to shift people onto transit and improve operations on the corridor in that matter. Objective four, improve safety for all road users, so whether you're a driver, pedestrian, or cyclist. I think we can all get behind the idea that when you leave wherever you're going, you want to get to your end destination in a safe manner. Objective five, enhance multimodal connections. So, make sure that, you know, if you do want to choose a portion of your trip on one mode of transportation, you can make those linkages to, you know, a car or cycling or to transit. And then, the last objective was to leverage technology and data for the future. So, you know, we live in times where tomorrow has never been more nebulous. We don't know exactly how tomorrow's going to be in mobility with autonomous vehicles. But these are things that we can be proactive at at a municipal level to address in the So, the current conditions. So, Clarence Rockland produces more trips, goes, more trips leave Clarence Rockland in the morning than come into Clarence Rockland. And that's, that's because there's a strong pull from, you know, the major employment center, which is the city of Ottawa and Gatineau. So, about 60% of trips that leave Clarence Rockland or that occur from Clarence Rockland in the morning are actually going west to go to the city of Ottawa. And about a quarter of all trips remain in the city. So, what this shows is that there's two main areas that we're looking at here, is we're looking at people who need to go outside of the city and move to other places. But there's also a big contingent of residents that need to get to and from all the different hamlets and settlement areas within Clarence Rockland. And on top of that, I guess, the external demand is also compounded by the fact that getting to Ottawa in the morning can take up to an hour from Clarence Rockland. And these are things that we heard from the public engagement, were things that residents were concerned about as, you know, today, their trip takes a certain amount of time to get to Ottawa, but they're wondering how is that going to impact in the future, especially if, you know, County Road 17 isn't widened, for instance. To distill it all, I guess, about 1,000 trips operate on County Road 17 in the morning. And that's, that's not something atypical for that type of roadway. But typically, in transportation planning, a roadway like that, you typically start looking at potentially widening it when it gets around the 1,000 vehicles per hour mark or around 1,200 vehicles per hour. And that's something that we've shown in our future forecast I'll go over. So, it's no surprise to everybody, there is going to be kind of an imbalance in terms of population and employment growth. And so, while Clarence Rockland is certainly going to benefit from the growth in Ottawa in terms of being, you know, a great place to live, and that's why a lot of people live here, and it's got great amenities, it also points to you're still going to have that pull of people going outside of Clarence Rockland for work and then coming back to live in Clarence Rockland, almost kind of a bedroom community scenario. It's going to keep going into the future. And then, the bulk of that growth is going to occur in Rockland and Clarence Point. And, but I think one of the other points is that most of that future population most of that future population, according to the plans in Clarence Rockland, are going to be directed towards mixed use developments. So developments that include residential and some other land use, which are typically more amenable to new modes of mobility such as cycling and transit. So in terms of, so this is a really complicated graph, but essentially what it's saying is just, there's going to be a growth in trips leaving Clarence Rockland in terms of, so today, we have about 60% of trips go in Ottawa. Proportionately in the future, we're going to see that grow to about 68, close to 70%. But what's important here is that internal trips are still going to grow. They're still going to comprise nearly a quarter of all trips. So that reinforces the idea that this plan, we can't just focus on improvements for getting people out of Clarence Rockland. We have to make sure that we're focusing on improvements to get people to and from all the different areas in Clarence Rockland. So this is kind of how that split's going to look in the future between today and then tomorrow. So what we heard when we asked residents, you know, what influences how you travel in Clarence Rockland or beyond? And most people said that the importance, most important factor was travel time, making sure they can get from point A to point B quickly. The second was cost, making sure they can get there and not spend an arm and a leg. And the third was reliability. So they want to make sure that when they select a way to get somewhere, that it's going to be reliable, that it's not 20 minutes today, then 60 minutes tomorrow, and then 30 minutes the day after. They want to make sure that it's fairly reliable in that sense. When we asked residents what areas of concern they found on the transportation network today, they found congestion to be the number one concern, followed behind by certain areas that were dangerous. So areas that were identified as dangerous were around County Road 17, around the major arterials. There is a sense that for pedestrians and cyclists, there was limited opportunities to safely cross the street in those areas. And then conversely, areas that they found really excelled at that were on Laurier Street and Caron Street and other smaller streets where there are currently pedestrian crosswalks within the city. So since we were developing an active transportation plan, we thought it was important to figure out, you know, those might be the overarching trends for how you move, but what do cyclists want, what are they looking for? And I think the interesting thing here is that cyclists, yes, they still want to get from point A to point B quickly. But I think they place, but what we found is that they place a higher importance on safety, making sure that when they're riding, they have facilities that they feel safe operating on, riding on, and that they can feel a certain degree of confidence that they, that they have some control over the safety they have while they're riding on the roadway. In total, what we found is that 55% of... So we asked respondents to kind of split how much of this TMP they want focused on each element of transportation. What we found is respondents found that they wanted 55% of the TMP to be focused on automobile improvements, and then 25% on transit improvements, and then about 20% on active transportation. And in terms of priorities by age, what we see is that young professionals tended to have more of a focus on automobile. And that's likely because of the long distances required to get to the bulk of the jobs, which in Ottawa are in Ottawa. So it just kind of plays out like that where it looks like, you know, younger professionals need to get and they just happen to need to drive to their job. And so that's why automobile improvements are typically, you know, improved in that type of scenario. And when we align how this is going to look in terms of the population pyramid, what we see is that Clarence Rockland's going to have an aging population. And so while those young professionals today might have a preference for automobiles, what we see is that as they get older, there's a preference for potentially other means of transportation like transit or active transportation. Whereas when you get older, you may not be able to drive. So in terms of the recommendations, we recommended 15 main roadway improvements. They were primarily in Rockland. And this is because when we forecasted vehicular operations and travel demand is that we found most of the constraints are going to be centered in Rockland. And part of that is because of the unique way that Rockland's roads are laid out due to the natural topography. And so that's going to put a lot of pressure on Poopah Road to connect to County Road 17. And it's also going to lead to the need to potentially have that east-west bypass to eliminate some of the stress on Laurier Street and some other east-west streets within the downtown core. In terms of active transportation, what we looked at really to develop a network of active transportation facilities is we looked at population density, rationales that where more people live, they're more likely to use it, where there's major destinations. As you all know, Rockland and Clarence Rockland in general tends to have hills. So we want to make sure that the routes we're proposing are easy for everybody to use. As well, we want to make sure that we have a network, not a disconnected set of routes. So in essence, what we're proposing is add about 70 kilometers of pedestrian routes. A lot of that is multi-use paths that can be used for cyclists as well. And that's split between Rockland as well as Bourgey and the other settlement areas. I'm just going to speed through this a little bit. In terms of cycling, we're proposing to have about 151 kilometers of cycling paths. Now, I will preface that as a caveat, that the bulk of that in terms of the 79 kilometers, which are paved shoulders, are primarily going to be on county roads. And that's part of their commuter plan. So don't be too alarmed by the amount of kilometers here. Some of it's going to be on the backs of the press con Russell. Overall, the main, the overarching thing here is that this plan will bring cycling facilities within 100 meters of approximately 80% of the city, in terms of the population. This is kind of how it looks like. So the main focus is more urban cycling facilities in Rockland, multi-use paths that can double as pedestrian facilities in Bourgey. And then we have those rural connectors on the rural roadways, the county roads, paved shoulders for more long-distance active transportation trips. In terms of transit, while transit wasn't a specific scope of this Transportation Master Plan, we looked at it just because there was no overwhelming demand from the public about it. And I guess the main thing here is just, as we identified with the main travel trends, is that there's a great demand for transit connections to go east-west to Ottawa to connect with the LRT. But we can't forget the need for internal transit connections. So right now, CRT operates in a peak fashion, kind of going out of the city in the morning, coming in in the afternoon. But there's still demand for people in Bourgey to access goods and services in Rockland as well throughout the day.
But this is a service going to be offered by county right now. They've had a grant for...
Oh, okay. Okay, there you go. So, on the positive, on the positive track. So the plan, the infrastructure improvements are supported by policies and strategies. So for instance, it's good to say we want a cycling lane on this street. But when development comes in, it's much easier to leverage development to build those facilities if you have updated municipal standards that say, hey, we have an arterial road, your development's on an arterial road, this is what we need, we need an active transportation route on it. And so that's one way you can leverage the development community to help build this infrastructure progressively over time. And that's also supported by other policies like transportation demand management. So when a development gets built in town, and it's right by an active transportation facility, for instance, there's measures that you can do as a municipality to encourage developments to implement onsite features so that it encourages people who live or work at those sites to use active transportation. So one example is that in my office, where I work, we have showers for cyclists. And that's because no one wants to work with me when I'm really sweaty. But if I bike into work and I can shower, then that encourages me to bike because then I don't have to deal with some of the inconveniences of cycling, which is being sticky. And on top of that, we also touched on traffic calming. So as we have this great active transportation network, you're going to have invariably more cyclists on the road and more conflicts between drivers, pedestrians, and cyclists. And so we have to keep in mind, you know, we recommended a framework for how to address potentially roadway safety issues that rise over time in terms of it could potentially be speeding, it could be potentially, you know, residents who bring up a request for they want a stop sign or a pedestrian crossing. We've recommended a framework for addressing those types of questions that may arise. And then on top of that, we also identified certain recommendations for downtown parking management. So with the advent of the Streetscape Plan downtown in Rockland, there's going to be, hopefully, a desire for more people to visit the downtown. And so these are things that we recommend that the municipality take a look at in terms of parking in the downtown to ensure that there's adequate ability for people to come, visit, and also partake in downtown activities. So how it all comes together, so we've got the vision and objectives, we've got the infrastructure pieces, we've got the policies and strategies, and that all blends into this comprehensive master plan that brings it all together. So in terms of the cost, so it's not cheap. It's $63 million. I will preface that with, this is a visionary document, so it's flexible, it's malleable to the needs of the community. So just because you see $63 million today, things are going to change in the future. You know, you have the benefit of being beside Ottawa. There may be a huge spurt of growth in which you can get a bunch of development charge money to build a lot of this stuff, right? On the other foot.
What do you got for one? Just throwing that out there. I said, what do you have for one million?
I mean, that's fair.
I'm just bugging. Those are fair points. I understand.
Those are fair points, it's a blueprint. But they're meant to be altered to the local context. The main thing here is what we're trying to say here is 54.3 million of this work, we say it's going to be really contingent on development charges. So that's contingent on growth occurring. So that growth is going to spur the need for these improvements. And a lot of the big-ticket items here are actually the roadway improvements, like Poopah Road, which is necessary for accommodating growth in South Rockland. And kind of back to that online engagement survey where we showed that people wanted 55% of the TMP to be focused on automobile improvements, we had a pretty good split of it. We see about 56% of the improvements we recommend are roadway improvements, and about 44% are active transportation improvements. So it lines up fairly well with what we heard from the public. Alright.
Questions?
Just a comment. According to slide 16, 19, and 20, it seems that people are not ready to leave their car at home and get the public transport. So, and as we know, we had problem, difficulty in increasing the number of people who would travel by bus. So this is, I think, that most part, more pressing priority would be to fix the roads. Because we're not there yet, I think we're not, because people want to get to work quickly. And whether they go by car, whether they go by bus, it takes almost the same time. So if they had the choice, they would still go with the comfort of going by car and having more flexibility on time, you know, taking other roads and trying to avoid traffic.
Yeah, and that's an excellent point. I think we're not naive, we don't think everybody's going to become a cyclist overnight. I don't even think a big, I don't even think we're going to see 12% maybe in the next 10 or 15 years. I think the main thing here is providing those options. So for instance, one that comes to mind is you have County Road 17, which is really congested, where most of those people go, they go into Ottawa. Now, maybe improving transit could shift some of those people onto transit, maybe open up a little more road space for the people who need to drive on County Road 17, and the transit just doesn't take them to their end destination. So it's kind of, there's synergies to be had between the different modes that help ultimately make it better for motorists and everybody alike by working together and treating it as one comprehensive holistic system, rather than drivers versus cyclists versus transit riders.
Your slide on future conditions. Where you state that, well, basically 70% of the 10-year growth is going to happen in apartments and mixed dwellings.
Yep.
Okay. I understand that, you know, that's going to be a trend. It's already a trend right now because houses are so expensive and getting mortgages is more difficult and sometimes out of price range for most folks. The issue I see though is, one, I look at how we're expanding in Rockland. I look at Morris Village, I look at Brige, the Sandcore development eventually. That's not, nowhere near the ratio that these developers are proposing. They're more, they're pretty much the opposite. It's closer to 50%, if not more, in just in single semis and rows. So for one, you know, our developers are not, currently are not doing that percentage, I don't think. And, but they're still selling. So I'm guessing if they're selling, it's because they see the need that's currently there. And the second thing is, if that ever changes to meet what you're saying in your report, then we're going to have a slew of changes in our hands from developers saying, hey, I need to change the way that I build my project because I can't sell. I have, I have a demand for apartments and mixed dwellings, but I don't have that in my plan. So that's going to be a huge change for the city, I think. And so I just wanted to point it out there.
And that's a great point, that's something that every municipality in Ontario struggles with. It's, you know, the economics, obviously, there's development that's occurring because there's some economic, you know, pieces that come together for that form of development to be viable, right? I think the main thing here is that there's certain tools that you can do as a municipality, say, hey, this is the type of municipality we want to have. How can we encourage certain types of development? So one example would be if you have a development going right beside a cycling lane, the developer may come in and be like, nah, we want to build something low density. But then you could go back to them potentially and be like, hey, if you build something a little higher density, we can give you a cut on your parking rates. Maybe you don't have to put as much parking so that it makes it a little more economically viable. They can get more units on that farm land without having to spend the extra cost for underground parking. There's different tools like that that could be leveraged from a land use perspective that makes it go lockstep, lock and lock with transportation.
And is that legal?
Yeah, yeah. It's contingent on the zoning bylaws. There are so typically added traffic impact studies for parking justifications for reduced parking. That often requires the consultant and the developer to work with the municipality to justify why lower parking.
Because one of the projects that we're doing is the Laurier visualization in the next couple of years. And you've driven on Laurier and there's a lot of empty spots and stuff. So that's one thing we could do is encourage, you know, exactly what you're proposing here, apartments and mixed dwellings, so that you fill up those spaces and densify your core and actually encourage your smaller businesses that are currently on Laurier to fill in those gaps. So.
Yeah, I mean, just, all of our master studies are based on the growth projections that the city supplied, based on our master, our official plan. So an official plan is some, some growth or some development ratios. And so what residents team has done, which all of our other master services studies have done, sorry, has taken that and has proposed or has given a, at a network level, some roadmap to put in place. But it's the growth that is used or is discussed in this master transportation study is not something that they've come up with. It's based on the DCs provided them with, same thing, our DC study is also based on the same growth projections, which is why the projects that are in the Transportation Master Plan is also found in the DCs because they are based on the same growth projections and the same types of development. So they're consistent that way.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councillors. Thank you very much for this invitation to come in this evening. And I don't know if I'm going to ask questions or if you guys are going to ask questions.
Did they detail where you want this line and all this? And the reasons that we throw the questions at you with the...
I'm sure everybody is familiar with Bouvier Road, from Levine to Russell Road. A short stretch of farmer's field, the crossing at the railway tracks.
A short stretch of farmer's field, the crossing at the railway tracks, and then thirty-three residents from that, in that one kilometer area going up towards Russell Road.
One point eight five.
One point eight five from Bouvier to Levine. And so, and there's one kilometer of, of the main, where the thirty-three people are. Now, we did receive twenty-nine of the thirty-three people that we visited, and that's all the residents in that area. One was, one was no, just because she said she has good water. And, and we're happy with that. Three, there was no contact. People were away and we didn't get a chance during the survey to get in to see them. The rest of the people, Dennis, myself, all visited them. We stated our situation and they all agreed with us that we should look into seeing about getting municipal water supply down there. Their biggest thing was, well, they just supplied all the farms on Russell Road from, from Borget to Chinny.
Yeah, we supplied those lines, but that was to boost the pressure.
Yeah, that's correct.
That was the main reason.
And that's what I told them. I said, that was a loop system. I'm a retired fire chief, so I understand the requirements for water supplies in the, in those areas. And that makes a loop system for you, really good. But people are saying, why did they put them out there for eight farmers when us thirty-one people can't get water supply? And water, I'm with the understanding, the water supply does come up Bouvier and turns on Levine. And then goes towards Borget. Yeah, Marcell, right. So what we're asking is, is there any possibility in the future? Or can we look at possibly putting?
Right now, if we worked, we'd have to give you a bill. We would pay one-third, Mr. Leonard, if I'm incorrect. But the bill you would get would be, I think we estimated around forty thousand dollars perhaps.
Yeah, well, one possibility would be a local improvement.
Local improvement.
And then two, like, that you have.
But you would still, even with that local, the municipality would pay one-third and you'd have to pay the other two-thirds. The best way to do it would be to wait and see if we'd get grants given out. Because there is grants that come out every so often. We keep an eye open for that. And if we do grant a grant, then we could look into your situation. But right now, with the provincial government, there is no grants being given. There's not, but it's starting to trickle out, maybe after the election.
Is there anything that we, the thirty-three people here, can do to expedite that? Like, do we go to, is there an avenue we could use? Do we go to our Member of Parliament? Do we go to the conservation people? Or who do we go to, to talk to about helping you get your grant?
Right, yeah, but right now, this, the government has to come out with programs, with grants. And they have nothing right now for water mains and all this. So we'd have to wait and see if one of those programs comes out and that if we qualify for it, and that way we would get you a lot of help that way.
Yeah. Well, what I'm saying is, in the interim, what can we do? My good neighbor Dennis is without water. His well has since gone dry due to the drought this year. He had the same problem last year and we have to haul water in for him.
Surface wells?
Yes, just about, I would say eighty percent of these homes are surface water. And you know as well as I do, surface water from day to day can change. So one day it can be good.
We know that.
Right.
I can assure you, any well you have, that's a surface well, can change from one day to the next.
I think also like the fact that the water goes on Moiselle. It goes on Bouvier from Cheminelleb, all the way to Rockland. And it's only that stretch. And like you said, there's about, yes, it's one point eight five, but there's an area from Levine to the first house is about half a kilometer.
Half a kilometer.
Yeah, so it's really one kilometer.
But it's still, right now, it would cost these people at least thirty to forty thousand dollars.
But I remember that we did bring the water to the other end of Enchamplain, to the other end from Le Fai, all the way to the end of the village. And we thought that would be really, really expensive, but they found a way where many costs.
That was a very short distance there.
Yeah, but that's about, that's almost, that's, that was about half a kilometer, yeah, about half of it. But still, you know, like per, per kilometer, maybe it would be.
Mr. Leonard?
Just, Mr. Mayor, those are a bit different in the sense of, just because we bring the water to the urban boundary, which was what it was supposed to be originally when we got the stimulus program. However, we had made a mistake in terms of what the urban boundary was. So the water was extended on Enchamplain. The water was extended about two hundred and fifty meters or so and it was drilled. And I, like mentioned, I think the best avenue is possibly the local improvement. I don't know that the province of the federal government would be funding something like this. They normally focus more on health and safety and, and big scale projects. I, I don't know if there'd be a funding stream for something of this size.
Thing is, every winter, every January, we have meetings and often we can make.
Do you want me to go?
No. Well, we do meet with ministers. We can bring the subject up to see if we can get money from one of the departments and push the fact that it's for safety and the health of the residents.
If, if we don't have water, our homes are worth nothing. And if our homes are worth nothing, you don't get the taxes. So, you know, we're, we're asking, and this is the only we can do. The other thing that a lot of people were concerned about is we did advertise, I believe, in the Clarence Rockland that there's a possibility that we are going to be, Clarence Rockland is going to be supplying water to Limon.
Yes.
Okay, up through La Roma's Forest.
Yes.
You know, the distance of kilometers.
Yes, but that's being paid by voters.
That's being.
Paid by us.
Well, ask them if we can borrow some. It's all.
I will warn you now, this, this project's not done legal yet.
Right.
But if it does go ahead, any resident that is on that line will be able to get municipal water.
Sure, exactly.
It'll be going down Indian Creek, so, and then into the forest.
Yeah, so there, there's going to be seven people are going to take advantage of that one.
Yeah, but they're paying the tab and I can tell you the tab is pretty high.
Oh, no doubt.
Yeah, and then there'll be a price on the water they could sue to.
It's just that these, these thirty-three people here are not, unfortunately aren't here. I'm going to have to go back and tell them that. And.
So I believe at this point, the best course of action is to start down the local improvement road. And as are Dan and Champlain, there may be a solution that might not be as expensive. So I suggest that Mr. Lieutenant meet with myself, Mr. Leonard.
And I was wondering if, if that thing goes ahead, probably much, maybe it'd be a good opportunity to connect because I think we'll be going by or we're already gone by.
Yes, we are. Yes.
So we will look at all possibilities.
Thanks, Alan.
We will look at all possibilities, try and help you. I understand where you're at. And if we do find some solution, we will go ahead and let you know.
Super. Now, in, in turn, is there any possibility of, like, for example, my water went down to, two feet above the foot valve. Is there any water supply that we can go to in Clarence Rockland where we can get water? Where you can draw water?
Mr. Leonard?
There's not something like that. Only during the floods, we had opened up water for affected residents.
Could we arrange something for the residents?
We'd have to, we'd have to look into that, Mr. Mayor. See what the, the impacts of that may be and so maybe.
Name, phone number, and address. We will see what we can arrange.
It's all on, it's all on the letter. I think Dennis and I are all on the letter.
Okay.
We'll look into this and see if we can find a solution for you.
We'd really appreciate it.
I've seen that sometimes when they do some work in their, in the building to accommodate the houses that are close to it. They provide a big container beside the house and then, you know, of municipal water. Could we do something like that for, I think we have, we have two cases like that in Roche right now. There's one family in Schnop who has new water right now and one on the, on the.
So could we get something, maybe at the fire hall?
We'll, we'll look.
We'll come back to this.
We'll look into it and look back.
And can I propose that a resolution at the Department of Infrastructure prepare a report to us to give the citizens at least an idea of what the options are? And the cost?
Let them look into it and then we can look at that.
Okay.
Let's get some information.
But don't they need a resolution or something to, to have the?
I think we'll, we'll just set up a meeting with the chairman and then we'll.
Let's go on to item number eight now. We're talking, the United Counties of Prescott-Russell, we're talking about intermunicipal village transportation. A new system. And Walmart objected to having a bus stop on their own property. I found that interesting. But they said it was an insurance concern on their part more than anything else. In any event, there are some individuals in Bochet who are, and elsewhere, who are interested in getting a transportation system. But how about, what was proposed throughout the counties to have a transportation system? Well, it, it's still alive. Let's go on now to the next item, SharePoint Document and Records Management Intranet Project. Yes, Mr. Mayor, whereas council approved a budget of two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to implement the SharePoint Document and Records Management Intranet Project in two thousand and seventeen, and whereas council approved a budget of seventy thousand dollars to design and build a new website in two thousand and nineteen, and whereas the SharePoint Document and Records Management Intranet Project and the website project were combined in two thousand and nineteen, capital budget work in progress list with a total budget of three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars be resolved, that the committee of the whole recommends that council authorizes that the full capital budget amount of three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars be utilized to implement the SharePoint Document and Records Management Intranet Project with the understanding that staff will be recommending that an amount of seventy-five thousand dollars be considered in the two thousand and twenty capital budget for the design and implementation of a new website, segmented by councillor Schwania. Now, why is there a seventy-five thousand dollar amount involved? I know that we've outlined all of the necessary budgetary item in all three other separate subjects or segments, but why the seventy-five thousand dollars? Mrs. Willet will come out with the facts and figures behind this particular amount. Go ahead, Mrs. Willet.
Well, Mr. Mayor. Now, the SharePoint budget allowed us to keep a certain amount in ba, in the bank, but we didn't, we weren't all that sure of the end cost, the final end cost of this. And we decided to bring about changes to the project and to put it online, to put the project in, online. By doing so, we modified the mandate of the initial project and I asked the budget then by revisiting the budget to make them aware or make council aware of the amount that was involved. Now, what we did was that we mandated the pilot group to become active as soon as possible. And we could do so ourselves without the pilot project group's assistance. But given the amount that, that we're short of, because of the shortfall of funds, and the same rule applies to community services, we proceeded to do an onboarding, an onboarding exercise to even out the costs. It would cost approximately twenty thousand dollars across the board. We're doing all that we can internally. But we, still, this is the best amount we can come up with with regard to SharePoint. Council of Bouchard, the SharePoint now project. With regard to the website project, we've added, of course, seventy-five thousand dollars added to implement it fully. We had seventy thousand dollars for the conception and the preparation and we have seventy-five thousand dollars again for the implementation and the concept of the, of, of the plan. But, you know, it won't cost you seventy-five thousand dollars just to press the enter key to become live. Well, for the past two years, we thought we could, we could go through SharePoint and come up with a fully functional website. But we were not recommended to go via that route. So the community services, through Martin Irwin, that takes care of the website, and the community services department have asked for approximately seventy-five thousand dollars for two thousand and twenty, so that it would be completely functional. But seventy thousand dollars that was set aside for the website was, will only be earmarked for that particular purpose? Yes. Well, who said that we could exploit SharePoint through the web? Well, we took a look at the amount earmarked for the website expenditures. It was not logical to come up with this website at the same time as coming up with the concept plans, the initial concept plans for the SharePoint program, if you wish. So we thought initially that we could, with SharePoint, come up with an Intranet component that was totally separated apart that would. Well, one thing that I would like to bring to your attention is that we approved seventy thousand dollars for a website and we have to allocate another seventy-five thousand dollars for the same reason. We still don't have a website. Well, it's, it's five thousand dollars more. It's seventy-five thousand. No, we had seventy thousand dollars at the beginning, I know, but they need this amount to complete SharePoint. SharePoint costs them more than they initially thought it would cost them. But I don't really know anything about internet sites. Everything's okay with thirty-five thousand? Am I the one that's mistaken with regard to this amount? It seems to be, to be quite high, quite. Will that include a maintenance contract? For example, if there's a change to be brought about to a website, to the website and we want to introduce a new event, are we going to do this ourselves? Or is there a maintenance contractor? Well, one thing that we're going to do is this, when we add content, it's from an administrative standpoint and not from a technical standpoint. It's to bring about technical changes in a work environment. Is, if the site does not function properly, we expect to obtain support. How many ye, years are you going to have support wise? But look, once the website is up and running, you have, you, you have the website key in hand. We start it up and all we pay are the domain fees. Well, yes, you know, when we proceed to a needs analysis and what we wish to have in the website, this is what becomes important, to determine what initially is important for us to include in the initial website. Well, what's, what is the duration of a website per se? We're going to put in seventy-five thousand dollars in this website. How long are we going, are we expected to keep this website along with the format that it will use? Well, you see, it all depends now. Now, because I, I, I ask myself the same question that you've just asked me. Look, if the website is well-designed and properly caters to the citizens' need, it will last for quite a long time. Technology with regard to websites modify, modifies each and every three months. But municipal websites look much like any other municipal web. look much like any other municipal website. There are some municipal websites that are awarded prizes each and every year for presentation and so on and so forth. But they look alike really. This is not a website that will be called upon to modify from stem to ster in two or three years from now. The technology that is used to implement websites or this is the same technology that's been used in the 90s. Only tools and methods do change throughout the years. Well, the website that we have right now, how long have we had it? How many years have we had occasion to make use of the website that we're using at present? Four years now, but we revamped it throughout the years. I see. Fine. There were, there are other associated costs with regard to this. We had presentations from the CyberPrime company and costs associated with that are unbelievable. We're not talking about we're talking about the federal government presentations, presentation from the federal government that were made to us and it's, we can talk about high costs. So three to four years is basically the norm? Well, I expect it's going to last us much longer than three to four years. And there are ways also to bring about the changes to websites without resorting to additional costs. I see. And that will allow people to make payments through that website to the municipality? Yes, there are some websites that have already started up in that particular direction. And that's, that will afford the common user, if you wish, I won't use that term, a common portal or a single window for many services. And if in three years we try, decide to offer new services that did not previously exist when we initially started up, this website is going to cost us more. Mr. Sima, why don't we just revamp the site that we have right now to cater to our needs? Well, good question, but it's not particularly well structured. It was structured for our needs four years ago and we're trying to navigate through the page and trying to come up with some things and we can't. When I started up with the, working with the city of Clarence and Rockland, I had difficulty in navigating through our website and I do have experience with computers. So there's a learning curve involved in this and we can't, of course, thrive and have it to progress, have this website progress as it should along the lines of our needs that are currently defined and are to be defined in the future. A concrete example I could come up with when we're comparing sites, for example, most of the sites will work with themes. If someone's interested in determining or obtaining information with regards to landfill sites he can just click to that landfill site tab and obtain all of the information, boughs, history, location, and so on and so forth. The same rule applies to construction permits. It's, it's more visually oriented, if you wish. And it's much more pleasant to navigate through. To answer Mr. Sima's question to repair it or revamp it, when we're talking about a company that hands us a site key in hand, they've already, they already have they already have templates that they've used and you've paid for things that have already been done. But if you're paying for someone that comes in that will revamp it as it goes, it's, it'll require hours and hours of work. And you're going to draw this out now. Now, in about five years, we might face repair costs that are higher. We're not talking about repair costs here in about five years. We're not going to repair the website, but all we want is to have a better infrastructure now and it will evolve with our needs as they evolve. Councillor Zant? Well, we're talking here about the 2020 budget. It's going to be considered in the 2020 budget as we enter into oncoming budgetary talks and we can come up with necessary conclusions then. So we have to vote on this, Mr. Mayor. All those in favor? Fine. Moved by councillor Levaire, all those in favor? All those in favor to add $75,000 to the 2020 budget? No. We're just amending the 335,000 initial figure to reflect this added value. Fine. All those in favor? Carry then. Item 9.2, whereas subsection A and B of Schedule D, non-competitive procurement of the existing procurement policy allows the municipality to single or sole source to vendors be resolved that the committee of the whole recommends to municipal council to approve the revised list of sole and single-source vendors as presented in Appendix A of Report FIN 2019-024. Segmented by councillor Levaire? Any questions? All those in favor? Carry then. Let's go on now to item 9.3, Mr. Carterelli. Yes, Mr. Mayor, that report number PRO 2019-023 in regards to monthly statistics for the months of June, July, and August 2019 be received as information. Segmented by councillor Zant? Questions? No, all those in favor? Carry then. Thank you. Item 9.4, councillor Guimar. Item 9.4. Yes, Mr. Mayor, that report number PRO 2019-024 related to current progress of the new fire stations be received as information. Segmented by councillor Bouchard? Councillor Guimar? All those in favor? Carry then. Item 10, other items? Any questions for depart- departments? A quick point, I had a few calls with regard to the intersection of the St. Joseph Avenue and Avenue du Pic. That's the Giant Tiger exit. I'd like to confirm with bylaw. We haven't determined any justification to put up those, that signage. We've received a report that Monsieur Bouchard and I have taken, taken a look at. What has us determined that we have a speed problem? We don't have any capacity or competence to say, well, there is really a problem when you have about 20% that travel 10 kilometers or more higher than the posted speed limit. You have 10%, you have a speed problem. Now, we do receive reports, Monsieur Rua drew them up. The statistics are extraordinary. But the project dies right there and then. Is there something we can do again and we follow up with this if there are no problems? Let's just say to the residents that there are no problems, but by looking at tickets, statistics, you can hand out tickets freely, but that won't solve the problem. Do we have a standard? Well, Mr. Mayor, there are standards that are applicable that the department makes use of, which is 85%. So if 85% of the vehicles travel at the speed limit or less, we determine then that it's not necessary to implement any speed control measures. And in the past, what we did was this, upon the individual councillors' request, we're proceeding with this analysis and we came up with a report that either recommended steps to be taken to either reduce speed in different ways, or we were not recommending any speed reduction measures to be implemented. I believe that in the past, well, I know that in the past, the Dr. Carpe was a street that had been targeted for certain measures, but there's a disconnect right now in between the bylaw enforcement department that receives statistics and what town councillors get as feedback. I, I believe that we should re-establish connection and have confirmed the fact that, well, you know, we made an analysis of, of traffic flow and in some areas and 85% of residents do, in some areas, respect the speed limit, but in other areas, that ratio does not respect the speed limits. Well, they don't have to go before council to make us aware of this. I do receive those statistics and I, I think they're very exhaustive. But then I wonder my, I wonder, now what? I don't, I'm not competent enough, you know, to take a look at this data to determine whether it's okay or not, you know? I need someone to tell me that this is what can be extrapolated from that data. Do we have, Mr. Leonard? I understand what councillors are saying, Mr. Mayor. In the past, there was a policy that had been adopted by town council. With regards to this particular request or these similar type requests, they were either supported by way of a petition or residents or ratepayers support. What happened in the past? Either there was a bylaw that was enacted or a measure that had been taken to reduce traffic or speed. It was not supported by the community or people living in that particular area. There are more people that complained afterwards than beforehand with regards to speed-related or perceived related problems, perceived speed-related problems. What happened in the past was that a petition had been drawn up, endorsed, was sent to the department. And after that, if the committee supported the contents of the petition, we were coming back to council and asking us to asking council to take further action. Sir, I don't think we should wait for petitions. We should be proactive as we are doing right now. We should have a better follow-up of statistics as they stand and come up with a more complete report to council as what needs to be done to control a situation if it needs to be controlled. Well, I think there are some residents that talk amongst each other in different wards. But I, I'm talking about speed limits or speed reduction. We're revising the parking bylaw at present. Does this, or can this go hand in hand potentially with speed reduction measures that can be implemented, implemented to reduce the speed limit in some areas to 40 kilometers an hour? Or are we going to come to the conclusion that some arteries do experience difficulties, problems? Especially those roadways that have been resurfaced and that are not as in poor shape as before? Well. Let me tell you that in the, in the past, Mr. Mayor. I know that 85% was a threshold for urban areas and 85% for urban areas and 80% for rural areas. If we need to modify or to bring a modification to this, we need to do so through a bylaw. There are reasons why we ought not to do this. Because the speed that is posted is rarely observed because there is a signage that indicates the speed. It might, there might be some different factors that are involved. You know, if the, if the roadway is too wide, too narrow, if it's under construction, be it posted, be the speed limit posted at 50 or 80, people will basically drive at the speed that they're comfortable driving at without giving rise to any safety-related risks in the area that they're driving in. I don't think that we should reduce to 40 kilometers an hour the speed limit throughout the city of Clarence and Rockland. Well, Mr. Leonard, the speed limit indicator that we have on the gravel roadway now. On many occasions, it does not work. On other occasions, it does work, but people don't even obey or don't even mind it really. I received statistics really concerning this traffic control mechanism and these statistics did demonstrate, I don't know if it's 70, 85% of the people do travel or maybe it's because the roadway, that area is a bit rough, they're, and people slow down. Let me tell you. They resurfaced the roadway. They, well, they put it crushed down. Even buses that go by at four o'clock in the afternoon through Highway 417 is unbelievable, the speed at which that bus travels at. Beforehand, they slowed down because of the poor shape of the roadway, but when we resurfaced it, then they they picked up speed. Well, I think that we do have statistics before us and we need help and and in making sense out of this. Well, I'm happy to see what's happening with the Deschamps Park area. What I'd like to verify is what's happening now with Mercury Road where the no parking signage has been put up and those, some of that signage has not, has not been put up in those areas that we initially requested the people put up at. We'll look into that, sir. Councillor Levaire? Yes, Mr. Leonard? I just like to reassure residents that are tuning in and that phone me each and every week and they send us an email to ask whether or not we're on track to open up La Carrewa Road as of the month of November. Well, as of today? It is possible there might be some delays involved, but up to now, we really haven't incurred any major delays. If there are delays, I would like to be made aware of those. Fine. I received a complaint with regards to the, to Living Road and Baseline Road. Yes, yes. And if we could have a bit of calcium resurfacing put on this, it would be, well, fine then. Councillor Laddon? Vinette Road is now over and done with. It's open, open for business. Yes, people are very happy because they were running short of roadway before getting onto Clarence. They were wondering how to get to Clarence. So we're, we're still, we're still on target for the opening of Laundry Road, are we? Yes, that's right. We're still on target with the opening of Laundry Road, yes. With regards to 9.2, we talked about single-source suppliers. How about truckers? Well, that's a standing offer. We're involved with a standing offer situation here concerning truckers. Is this? Are we going to revise this particular policy this year? I'm
I'm not sure. It's either this year or next year. We're going to review the situation as it stands right now, and we might resort to standing offers or not with regards to truckers. That's it? Fine then. Adjournment? Oh, I had something. I, I thought you had, I'd ask you first, Mrs. Schwanja. No, I, 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 I don't have anything to raise personally, but I'd like to react to what you've stated. I think it's important, we're going to have to have a clear directive concerning the speed limits on, with, with roadways here, and I know it becomes complicated from a department standpoint. If we have a petition, it, it avoids performing work for nothing, and if there are a lot that do complain, that's fine, but if, uh, if just a few residents complain, it might be another matter. So we're, you're resorting to procedures, well, given petitions, we know that a majority of residents are in agreement that things have to be done, and then we forward this petition to department heads and to make them aware of the situation that needs to be corrected, and it breathes life into a process much easier so that it can, it can be implemented fully. That's right. And I was just wondering if it was normal to go ahead and to change this and to bring about modifications ourselves without resorting to petitions exclusively, but I certainly am in agreement that petitions do help, do help in bringing about change, especially with particular roadways. That's it, Mrs. Schwanja? Fine. All right then. So, folks, thank you very much, and adjournment is is called, yes? Segmented now. Fine, see you next month, folks.